Welcome to the Village of Bartlett Board Meeting for June 21, 2016. I call this meeting to order and ask the Clerk to please call the roll.
Trustee Aaronz?
Here.
Cameron?
Here.
Carbonaro?
Here.
Daney?
Here.
Hopkins?
Here.
Ranky?
Here.
President Wallace?
Here. Requested that Pastor Rosemary Traynor from Jesus Journey Church do our invocation this morning. Pastor Traynor?
Father, I lift up the President of Bartlett, the trustees, financial director, and all who are in places of authority, and I ask for your wisdom to lead and guide them in all their decision-making. Let every decision they make be a decision that will bless this town, causing it to become prosperous and bring growth. I pray a blessing over this town, over our President, trustees, their families, and over all the people who live in this town of Bartlett. Protect our leaders, their families, and all who live in this town. Give our leaders strength, endurance, and stamina as they perform their duties each day. Fill them with your peace, love, and joy, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor Traynor.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item we have this evening is our consent. Under the consent agenda, all items listed with an asterisk will be considered enacted in one motion. There will be no additional discussion on any item on the consent agenda. Hearing that, is there anything that any board member would like to add to the consent agenda?
Mr. President, I'd like to add item 12A1.
Anybody want to have a discussion on that, or no? All right.
Yes.
Anything else?
One moment. I just, trustee Carbonaro, I was wondering if we might be able to add the jewel fire lane. You want to discuss that?
Yeah, I was just about to say that, so not a problem.
Well, I wanted to ask you first. May we?
Yes.
Item number E.
E6.
6, jewel fire lane. Anything else? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to amend the consent agenda to include the following items: the bill's list from June 21, 2016, the Standing Committee report, planning and zoning committee, Elgin Beverage Site Plan, the Finance and Golf Committee, item C1, prevailing wage ordinance, item C2, Brewster Creek Tiff payout, number 35. Also on the consent is under D, License and Ordinance Committee, D1, Independence Day Parade request, the carnival license application. Also under the consent agenda will be included, under the Police and Health Committee, the vehicle replacement for the administrative section, vehicle replacement for investigations section, vehicle replacement for support in crime prevention, vehicle replacement for patrol, traffic, and direct patrol, vehicle replacement for community service officers, and item E6, jewel fire lane agreement.
So moved. Second.
Moved by trustee Hopkins, seconded by trustee Daney. Will the Clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Aaronz?
Yes.
Cameron?
Yes.
Carbonaro?
Yes.
Daney?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Ranky?
Yes.
That motion carries. I'll entertain a motion to approve the amended consent agenda.
Moved.
Moved by trustee Aaronz, seconded by trustee Hopkins. Will the Clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Cameron?
Yes.
Carbonaro?
Yes.
Daney?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Ranky?
Yes.
Aaronz?
Yes.
That motion carries. Next item we have this evening is minutes. I'll entertain a motion to approve the board and committee minutes from the June 7, 2016 meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by trustee Cameron, seconded by trustee Carbonaro. Is there any discussion on the minutes? Clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Carbonaro?
Yes.
Daney?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Ranky?
Yes.
Aaronz?
Yes.
Cameron?
Yes.
That motion carries. Next item we have this evening is the Treasurer's Report. Mr. Montenox?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll start out with the sales tax report this evening. Fiscal year-to-date revenue for sales tax, $1,909,582, represents a 6.08 percent increase over the same time period last year. Moving on to the motor fuel tax allotment report, fiscal year-to-date revenue, $960,273, and that represents a 105.02 percent increase over the same time period last year. You'll notice that in March of 2015, I think we had a little bit of an anomaly there where some disbursements were lower than usual. It was probably made up the prior month, so that's why I think we have that large variance. So far, motor fuel tax is right on budget for the fiscal year.
And just a quick question, Jeff. Had some discussions with some other mayors today about what may happen in July. Do we?
This happened last year. I think you're referring to the state budget.
Yep.
What happened last year was motor fuel tax or gaming tax was delayed, and I think it was Senator Tom Cullerton who introduced a bill, maybe in September or October, that released those revenues last year. So if they don't come up, the state doesn't come up with a budget, I would anticipate that the mayors will be vocal again, and that a bill will release those monies back to us.
I appreciate you updating us on these because it's a good way to share with everyone, the residents and all, you know, that we are attempting to keep an eye on the motor fuel tax and the other things that could be slashed. So, thank you.
Sure.
Next item we have this evening is the President's Report. This evening, we have an annual event with the Historical Society Building Plaque Program. The Bartlett Historical Society has selected four historical buildings for recognition, and the building owners will receive Historical Society Building Plaques. Priority is given to structures that are at least 50 years old and have architectural details and/or additions that are faithful to the original structures. The Bartlett Historical Society will discuss the homes and ask the owners to come up and get their plaques, so if you want to share that information with us? Yeah? I'm not sure if it'll reach down there, but if it will, that you're...
Hi. My name is Carol Ann Kunkel, and I'm the President of Bartlett's Historical Society. And to my right is the Vice President of the Historical, Eileen Lucietto. And we are going to present four very treasured buildings in Bartlett with historical plaques because of their significance to the community. Are we going to see a picture up there? Okay. First one is Dr. Economos here? Put him on your list. He didn't show up. Promised me. Okay. The first one is a building that's very well-known to all of us and probably one, a very great Bartlett icon. For many years, it was a hardware store, and lots of people have all kinds of great stories to tell about that hardware store, and there are a lot of mementos of it that are in the Bartlett History Museum, as we know. It was built, it was actually the second version of the hardware store, built by Herman Henry Schultz in 1926, and it's been changed a little bit on the front, but still very clearly recognizable, and we have a very honored guest here tonight. We have Naomi, the great-granddaughter. Stand up. Her daddy, her great-grandfather, was the builder of Schultz Hardware, which was, operated here for over 100 years. Today, it's TL's Four Seasons Chinese and Japanese Restaurant, and that's a mouthful, isn't it? Okay. Anyway, okay. What's our second one? This is a home at 210 Eastern Avenue, as you can see on the screen, owned currently by Susan and Thomas Steele. And Susan and Thomas are here this evening. Won't you come forward? The original house was a simple Cape Cod. The first-floor addition and two-car garage was added after the purchase of an additional 10 feet of property from adjacent property of Herb Schnade, probably in the 1940s or 1950s. The home has a gray-green cedar siding, white shutters, and a gray-green roof. It's not too clear in that photo, but if you go find it, you'll see the colors. When British colonists traveled to the New World, they brought a housing style so practical that it endured through the ages. The modern-day Cape Cod houses are modeled after the rugged architecture of colonial New England. Although it has English roofs, the Cape Cod-style home is distinctly American. It evolved in New England from colonial-style houses in the early 1700s, primarily in response to the availability of materials and the area's harsh, stormy climate. The steep roof helps slough off the heavy snow. Thank you. The next honoree is another resident, and this one is 447 Tennyson Road. And by the way, if you didn't get one coming in, we have programs, which I have a bunch over there by the front chair. Feel free to grab one. I'll give you one when we get done here, which will be in about 30 seconds. This house was built in 1963. Really, 1963 doesn't seem that long ago to me. I don't know how you feel about it, but it's owned by Craig and Mary Carol Gishlin. If you guys will come on up. And this was built by George Lamb for the Williamsburg Homes. It's a mid-century modern and architectural interior product and graphic style that generally describes the mid-20th century developments in modern design, architecture, and urban development, and prevailed from 1933 to 1965. So it's a very definite style of architecture in Middle America, and congratulations. The last and fourth building, I think everybody knows, the antique barn behind Banbury Fair. The antique barn is now new to you and sells gently-used and reconstituted antiques. It was built in approximately 1882 by the owner of the building, which is now Banbury Fair, Fred Waterman. The barn of red-and-white cedar board may be one of the oldest barns still remaining of the many which were once widespread over Bartlett. The barn never had animals in it, but probably housed carriages, wagons, and tools. During the '70s and '80s, the Bartlett J.C.'s were given permission by the Watermans to turn it into a spook house, which delighted hundreds every fall. When the Sufferings purchased it in 1987, it had to be stripped and refurbished to save it. For Bruce, it was his dream come true to own a barn. Originally used as a garden shop, it became evident that it was ideal for selling antiques, which it has, to Banbury Fair customers for over 30 years. So, new to you, but quite old indeed. We have brochures that are available on the backside. It lists some upcoming events of the Bartlett Historical Society, namely, we will be at Heritage Days again on Sunday this year only, with tours of the downtown area and old buildings. They begin at noon. Unfortunately, it says 12:30, so the first tour is at noon, however. And then we will have, again, a cemetery walk that you might be interested in. We have costumed actors who portray people who are actually buried there and lived and died in Bartlett, usually quite a few number of years ago. So be sure to get your brochure. There's also a handy membership form on the back in case you'd like to join the organization. Thank you. I just heard that Dr. Economos is in the house. You were up first, and missed your description, but you can still come up and get your award.
Sorry about that. I told you I came about 7:30, sorry.
No, I said the food was at 7:30. And he was... Thank you very much, and those of you who are here for the Historical Society, we have a reception upstairs in the training room, and we'll join you up there in 30 seconds. And I must add that these beautiful plaques were originally created and made just for us this year for the first time by our local artist and my husband, Lambert Lucietto.
Thank you so much, ladies. Are they serving wine or something up there? What do they got up there? Hey, Ruth, save me some wine. All right, moves along to our questions and answers session. Does anybody have any questions at this point?
I do. Jeff, this is in regards to your Finance Department memo 2016-12 for the refund applications.
Yes.
Okay. My question is, we worked very diligently over the last probably eight to nine months to get rid of as much of the utility tax as possible, and I was under the impression that the proration of the utility tax would also prorate the rebate where we can remove that altogether?
Excuse me, there's still an ordinance in place that administratively, we have to rebate residents, the senior residents, the $30 rebate. The expense by the residents was incurred as fiscal year, basically while the full utility tax was still in place. So if the board would like to do something with the rebate program going forward, we certainly could do that.
Okay. I would like to see that.
Something we can discuss, I guess, at some point? Maybe just a note as to the total amount and how it'd impact before we get into a bigger discussion about it.
Why don't we take that opportunity and put some information together and bring it back?
Yeah.
No matter what we do with the rebate program, is it necessary for us to make a list with names on it?
I'm sorry?
It's a supplemental report. I think we're just trying to be as transparent as possible, but we could change that.
I just wondered that perhaps it would be, you know, personal information that somebody may not want to have revealed, for whatever reason.
We could make that change.
Maybe just pull out of the address.
Okay. Yeah. No problem.
Anything else?
I have one question. I know there was some concerned residents over the weekend about water quality. I was wondering if staff could address it?
We got word from Elgin last week that they were experiencing from the Fox River an elgo bloom, which was causing some taste and odor, like musty-type odor smell. It happens every few years. I think the last time they had the issue was two or three years ago. Elgin has assured us that they are making everything that they can possibly do at their treatment plant to counter that, and increasing their well use at this time, too, to try to soften that as well. We've been getting calls and relaying the information. We put some, or we're working on, I don't know if we got on today or not, but we're putting some information on the website so that residents can go there to see.
Thank you, Dan.
Dan, does Elgin bloom happen in Lake Michigan? Do you know?
Yes, they also experience it from time to time, so it's...
I was curious about that.
Both by the water do.
Speaking of water, where are we on the water deal?
Well, we're hoping to bring it to the board next month.
It's on my radar.
Well, we certainly hope so. Did you ask about the water agreement? I'm sorry, I didn't hear that. We do hope it will be there. We spent some time with it, and Brian certainly did, and we thought it was pretty good to go. We went to Elgin, and, you know, they're losing their manager, and they're doing some other things, and someone had the nerve to go on vacation, so we hope we'll get it back soon.
Hearing none, we will move on to the Town Hall portion of the meeting. At this point, if anyone in the audience would like to address the board, please step up and state your name and address, and please keep your comments to three minutes.
Good evening, Mr. President and trustees and staff. My name is George Coziel, and I reside at 654 Hazel Nut Court, Bartlett, Illinois. I am here tonight as a concerned resident of Bartlett and an active participant in the Village of Bartlett Transit Oriented Development Project. This evening, you are about to see and hear the outcome of this project, a finished plan, plan that will aid forward in trying to improve the Bartlett downtown area. My involvement began in July of 2015, when I was told of the upcoming project and asked if I would like to be a participant. I accepted the offer, and the process soon began. In August of 2015, I attended one of several focus group meetings put on by Adam Flickinger of Solomon Cordwell Bunn's SCB. The purpose of these meetings was to talk about what we might like to see happen in the Bartlett downtown, or things that we didn't like, or just about anything else related to the area that would be included in this plan. These were fact-finding, blue-skying sessions. This evolved into what became known as the TODD Steering Committee, and the project was officially kicked off on August 11, 2015. As a point of reference, the committee was comprised of the following 16 people who deserve mention at this point: Christine Carlisle, SCB Director of Planning; Adam Flickinger, SCB Associate; Brian Hacker, Metra; Michael Horsting, RTA; Vince Carbonaro, Village Trustee; Tony Freiden, Village of Bartlett Economic Development Coordinator; Roberta Grill, Village of Bartlett Assistant Community Development Director; Shane Cook, Village Resident; Steve Fry, Village Resident; Paul Olson, Village Resident; myself; Don McGuire, I'm sorry, Don McClure; Mark Mersky; Abby Schwartz; Jane Shoemaker; and Tracy Smodilla. As an active, concerned participant who attended every gathering of the committee, the focus group, all four Steering Committee meetings, all three public workshops, and contributed to detailed written reports to SCB, I feel uniquely qualified to speak on behalf of the Village of Bartlett Downtown TODD Plan being presented here tonight. Over the last eight months, many ideas, thoughts, and sometimes dreams about what downtown Bartlett might become were discussed. We listened to many of the comments from the team of facilitators helping us put the plan together. We listened to the public voice their opinions and concerns at three public workshops. The overall plan encompasses a large, diverse area centered around the downtown. On the north, it begins at Norton Avenue, proceeds to Devon Avenue; to the south, from Western Avenue on the west to Prospect on the east. As you will see, the final plan addresses many concerns, each of which will play an important part of the plan. I don't think anything was left out of the discussions. The major points of the plan are real estate market analysis overview, transportation and connectivity overview, downtown revitalization recommendations, development and public realm recommendations, implementation strategies. I'm not going to try to cover the plan in any great detail. You will hear and see that for yourselves very shortly. I believe that this is a good plan, a sound plan, and a plan that can aid us in developing the downtown area of Bartlett. It covers many of the points that need to be addressed and resolved if we want to develop and move forward. To do nothing should not be an option. You may not agree with all points of the plan. You may say that some things need to be addressed more strongly, that things are of less importance. That's perfectly acceptable. In putting the plan together, we try to include as much as possible, and in some cases, give it a priority based on some reality. Remember, you must look at the merit of the plan as a whole. Do not get stuck on one or two points of disagreement or concern. No plan is perfect. This plan, like many other plans, may need to be adjusted and tweaked as we move forward in our development of the downtown. We will probably find that we will pick and choose what can be done and when it can be done. Some things will be easier to do than others. Some things will be doable at a minimum cost, others will not. Nothing says that all the points need to be developed. Nothing states that there is a mandatory sequence of events. Even with all that having been said, this is a good plan. Here is where I want to challenge you. I challenge you to listen openly to the presenters of the plan. I challenge you to read the entire plan, and then when you have completed the reading, I challenge you to go back and, yes, read the plan again. There is a lot to learn. There is a lot to think about. It sounds like I'm a strong advocate for the Village of Bartlett Downtown TODD Plan. You are correct. I feel so strongly that I would say that this is the most important endeavor that I, as a concerned 28-year resident, have ever been involved in. Since 1989, I have been involved in many groups, studies, focus groups on a number of topics. I am most proud of my part in the Village of Bartlett Downtown TODD Project. This plan is Bartlett's future. This plan may continue to evolve even after I am gone. I think this plan offers a sound tool for us to aid us in the development of Bartlett. Our future is in this plan. We need to approve, accept, and embrace this work. Although this is the first presentation of the plan, and you are not voting on the plan tonight, I still ask that you continue to move this forward as quickly as possible to the EDC, PC, and ZBA for their additional input, and then for a public hearing to take place. Keep reading the plan. Give the consultants and staff your ideas and thoughts. Continue to move this plan on for a final vote. The citizens, the voting public, your constituents deserve the chance to see what this plan is all about. Plan needs to become a working document, a work in progress, as soon as possible. This is a good plan, a professionally well-done plan that is the result of many meetings, committee and public, many hours on the part of all involved, and a huge amount of work by the consultants and their staffs. I hope that no one says that we can't afford it. We must find a way. To do nothing is not an option. To do nothing is to risk the future development in many areas within the downtown area as defined in the plan. I strongly hope that we do not see paralysis by analysis and that the plan not get approved. I have one last thing to say. I challenge you to vote to accept and approve this plan in the very near future. A vote for the plan is a vote for Bartlett's future. Thank you, and thank you for putting up with me for a little more than three minutes. I think it was necessary.
Thank you, George. Appreciate your input.
My name is Paul Marugas. I live at 109 North Elroy Avenue. I addressed this board over a year ago. I had a foreclosed home next to me. I have a fence that's falling down. It is still falling down. Matter of fact, sections have fallen down. There's a code in place the village is supposed to enforce. On such things, they don't enforce it. The house was in foreclosure through the bank. It's come out of the bank. These lovely people purchased the house, but the fence is still falling down. As a matter of fact, they put skids up to represent a fence and a piece of plywood. I have talked to the code enforcement officer several times here in the village to no avail, and it's been almost two and a half years I've been complaining about this set fence. I am here for telling everybody here, my witness... I am here for telling everybody here in my witness that the village is now liable, if I pertain any damage, for not enforcing the code or any injury to my grandchildren or anybody on my property. I am tired of this. Also, the house next to that house, which is 111 North Elroy, is the fence problem. The one next to it has no garage door. There's a code in this, too. Nobody wants to do anything about it. If this was your neighbor, I'm sure this would be fixed a long time ago. Yeah, I don't have a big house in this town. But come on, let's get this done, please.
Thank you. Do we want to address that?
We'll look into it. I'm sure the code officers have gotten the information, and we'll follow up on it. In terms of, if it's out of foreclosure, then we would have to make sure the property owners would address the repairs on the fence.
You can make a comment from back there.
I'm sorry. I just want to bring up that I believe there's something in this village. When you sell your house, you have to pay a fee or something.
Transfer tax.
Shouldn't there be this fee, or at least an approval to move in, that this house is occupiable and up to code in the village? I mean, the bank should have tore down this fence before even occupancy was granted this house. Now, these poor people buy this house. They don't know what the rules are, and they're stuck with this. The bank was the one to attack. Thank you.
Jim, can you bring us the status on this at our next meeting, please?
Actually, what we'll do is find out. We'll email you tomorrow.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
And sir, if you can make sure you give us the status if nothing happens. Anyone else? Hearing none, we'll move along. Next item we have this evening, understanding committee reports. Planning and zoning committee, Chairman Ranky.
Thank you, Mr. President. The only item has been addressed under the consent agenda.
Thank you, Chairman Ranky. Next item for standing committee reports is building committee, Chairman Hopkins.
Thank you, President Wallace. We have one item under the building committee. It's for the Bartlett High School Activities Complex. What we have is a resolution that shows the support for the construction of the Bartlett High School Activities Complex. The complex will keep the residents, as well as Bartlett High School and the town community, instead of traveling to Streamwood High School for many of its events. Does staff have any further comments?
I'll go ahead and read the resolution, and then they can make a motion if they want me to resolve, so that's okay?
Sure.
Resolution supporting the construction of Bartlett High School Activity Complex, whereas Bartlett High School students, who want to attend home games and events, now travel to bus, by bus, to Streamwood High School, where they share the stadium and field with Streamwood students. And whereas a new activity complex proposed on the site of an existing but old running track at Bartlett High School would include a new synthetic turf field, bleachers for 3,500 fans, track and field competition facilities, as well as a new scoreboard lighting and pavilions. And whereas the complex would benefit all Bartlett High School hawks, including athletes, band members, PE students, assembly attendees, and fans. And whereas the complex would also be a boon for the community, available for use by Bartlett Park District and youth leagues, league athletes, and civic organizations that need space for fundraisers or charitable events. Whereas the proposed activity center would not only be both safer and more convenient for students, it also would boost morale and instill a renewed pride and spirit in the Bartlett High School family. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Kevin Wallace, resident of Village of Bartlett, Cook, DuPage, and King County, Illinois, ask we give Bartlett High School the home field advantage and support the Bartlett High School boosters and fundraising for the construction of a new activity complex. I'll entertain a motion.
Second.
By trustee Dany, seconded by trustee Camer. Will the clerk please call the roll for resolution 2016?
Forty-six.
Forty-six.
Trustee Dany?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Ranky?
Yes.
Aaron's? Camer?
Yes.
Carbonaro?
Yes.
With all in agreement, I still resolve that we support that, so thank you.
No, last night, the Rotary Club presented. The Brewster Club with a check for $25,000 to help them on their way to building the activity complex. So I hope that maybe the other service clubs in Bartlett will see fit to support this as well.
Yeah. I know they've been working pretty hard to try to get something put together for a lot of years, so, you know, I'll hope they can get. Thank you, Chairman Hopkins. Next item we have for standing committee reports is the finance and golf committee, Chairman Dany.
Mr. President, we had two items on our agenda this evening. Well, number one was a prevailing wage ordinance, and second was Brewster Creek Tiff Payout Number 35. And both those were covered under consent agenda. We have nothing else for this evening.
Thank you, Chairman Dany. Next item we have this evening, understanding committee reports is under license and ordinance committee, Chairman Aaron's.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have two items in our agenda. The Independence Day Parade permit request and the Cardinal License application, both of which have to do with our Fourth of July celebrations. So we're well on our way to going to it. And they've both been approved in the consent agenda. There's no other business.
Thank you, Chairman Aaron's. Speaking of parade, I didn't look at the date. The parade is on Sunday, is it?
Sunday.
Sunday the third.
Sunday, the third, July 3rd, right? Okay. And then fireworks are the fourth on Monday.
Always.
Next item for standing committee reports, police and health committee, Chairman Carbonaro.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have seven items. Six were covered on the consent. The open item we have is for the Bartlett Police Facility Architectural Services. Let's see. This is a standard form of agreement between owner and architect for a large complex project. Architectural Services to design a new Bartlett Police Facility between the village and Williams Architects. The architect?
A brief overview of this, and I'll ask our attorney to go into any detail. If you recall, last fall, we went through the process to select an architect to look at the potential to redevelop or develop a new village hall. And we followed what we needed to do legally. We went out for an RFP. I think we got 12 different architectural firms. And based on experience, we whittled that down to four. We did interviews of four firms. And as the law says, we are to look at quality and experience. And the cost is not one of those things that you are allowed to put in the process. We brought to the board the recommendation that we hire the firm, the Williams Architect, and the board unanimously approved it. We then began into the first phase of that architectural review, and we brought the results back to the board. And they directed us to get the information to continue the process. And we have done that this evening. Brian, do you have anything to follow up?
Yes. The statute that Valerie is referring to is the Professional Services Selection Act, or similar name. And it provides where you send out this RFP, and they send you their credentials. And they're rated. And then you negotiate with the highest-rated firm. And if you can't, if you can't reach agreement, that's who you go with. If not, you go to the next firm. So we did do this in two phases with the idea being that if the board decided not to do the building, we would simply have done the first portion of the work, which was the needs analysis and a little further review. And it was contemplated, we would come back then with a regular architect's contract for the design. When I say regular, I mean AIA, standard form of agreement. And at that point, you will see that this contract provides for a 7.25% of the construction costs. And that percentage is within the guidelines of the Capital Development Board, as well as we contacted other architects, see what an appropriate fee would be. And they rate them based on the development board, that is, also the complexity. And in this instance, there's going to be a couple of phases, and it's more complex because you're trying to keep the police station on this campus and not move them off-site, which means additional complexity to it, plus utilizing, you have some concealed conditions that you're going to run into. So Capital Development Board has arranged for new projects, and there are actually higher percentages for remodeling. But for the complex group, it's somewhere between 5.76% and 8.66%. And if it's less complex, it's 7.42. And that doesn't take into account the longer period and some of the more logistical issues. So the range, or the proposed basic fees are within that range, at 7.25%. AIA, which is the American Institute of Architects, has some standard forms of agreement. But there are many different varieties. And this particular form is for a large complex project. And then with the, it was modified to provide for a construction manager constructor, which is not typical of what we, what the village typically does. Usually, we bid it out and select a single general contractor. In this instance, and as a general rule, I'm not a fan of construction manager-type contracts. But it's a construction manager constructor, which means it's at risk, which means there's, it would be combined with a guaranteed maximum price. And because of some of these complexities and logistics, the architect in negotiations made a compelling argument that it would be wise to use that type of contract. In part, you get more cost estimates that the construction manager constructor is involved in some of the pricing and the budgeting as the price goes. With the concealed conditions and the existing structures and working around that, that was what was proposed. The contract spells out, you know, there's scope of services, compensation, some of what the additional services would be. And the architect had put together for the option that the board tendatively was looking at from a conceptual standpoint, an order of magnitude planning study budget. And it, and within that, you'll see what they're estimating the construction manager constructor to cost, as well as where the math came from, so to speak, the percentage and what you would apply it to. So overall, there are basic services and additional services that are provided for in this agreement. Again, as I say, the basic services being 7.25% of total construction cost, which is different than the total project budget, which includes some other items. But staff is recommending the board approve this contract. Architect was here presenting at a previous meeting, going through the options the board heard from a financial consultant relative to our ability to pay for this project. And this would be the vote, if you will, if it's approved, to move this project forward. Be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Can we talk about the budget? It said it was budgeted, and is that?
Well, budgeted is in the, there were different options that were reviewed, and there was a budget for each one. And those were given to the board before. And then this was emailed to you separately. It apparently was not attached to the memo in the contract. And I saw that on Friday, and it went out right away on Friday.
So we're not agreeing to spend $20 million tonight?
Oh.
Okay.
You, as the scope is refined, you can reduce some costs, and that's part of it. So this is more of a conceptual point here. You're not. There are other costs beside the architect and this construction manager. There's, this budget reflects numerous, you know, site costs and other things. And so that 20 million is the all-encompassing cost. But in terms of just straight-up construction cost building, you're at 15.5, 17.4 is the range at this stage.
So let me ask you. Correct me if I'm wrong. My understanding is, is that what we received in option two, those are just some basic numbers, some, a very loose type estimate. And then by entering into this contract, we'll be able to firm up these numbers and have a very accurate picture of exactly what it would cost.
Yes, and one of the reasons for this construction manager constructor-type option that often, particularly this, where there's some hidden conditions and things, there's a budget, and then the bids come in, and they may be nowhere near what the estimate is.
So I think that's something that we have to have.
You've got some, where they're doing more digging and looking at things to refine those numbers. You actually have the contractor, not the construction manager, putting input into the plans. And the, and that helps them refine the budget and estimates so that your bids come in closer. What actually gets bid in this scenario are the subcontracts. You hire the construction manager constructor. He's within a range here, but he is paid a fee, percentage fee. And we would do the same, do an RFP for that tradesman as well. There, he's not necessarily covered by that same professional services contract where you don't get into pricing. I think you could ask the range of pricing when you're trying to hire a construction manager constructor, because then he's going to take on all the subcontractor, the trades that get bid. And those will all be his subcontractors.
Just as a clarification, you won't approve a $20 million building until you see the building, you see it designed, you move some pieces around until you are all done and you like it. And then you won't approve it until we bring back our financial consultant. We'll have a calendar by then, and we issue bonds. Now, we have, as you know, for the option that I think the board liked, in terms of keeping the taxes down, we have some reserves that we would spend on this project and probably would spend on the early architectural plan. But there is several more steps that have to come before you decide to build a building.
So we are guaranteeing with this contract to spend at least $1.1 million for architectural services?
The, not, the, the basic services won't be less than 1.60 million.
If we, if our financial situation changes, and we decide to only spend $14 million for a police facility, would we be overpaying for this service?
When you say spend $14 million, you'll still be okay relative, if you're talking about this total construction cost. If you're talking about the total budget, which here is shown between 20 and 22 million, then, I suppose, percentage-wise, but what you see with these typical projects is the smaller the project, usually the percentage is higher when it's less. And here, it's locked in, but it is, it does have that minimum there. So, when I look at Capital Development Board ranges...
Do you think it's in our best interest to kind of know our scope of work before we proceed with this?
Well, you have to, it's a chicken-egg problem. You have to design the project, and so you have to hire the architect to do the design. So...
Now, what we did last year, and it's been a while in between this, is we brought a needs analysis to the board first. We did a needs and space analysis, and went through in detail what we thought, and what our architects and what the chief thought we needed to have a police department that would bring us into perpetuity, if we're going to keep it on this site. The board understood that, we talked about the different elements of that plan, and the direction was to move forward. So, we brought a couple of different layouts, if you'll recall. One had the driveway going straight through to Oak Street in the back, one had a cul-de-sac effect tying in this building. And if I'm not mistaken, it was Plan B. Am I correct, Chief? It was a while ago, but that was a plan you folks liked. And the estimate of that plan, with all of its contents to start the process, was about $20 million. So, we have here an architectural proposal that is based on that. A little bit on the low end, if you look at the towns around us, and what they paid is really lower, but it will be to design the plan overall that you have seen and you have picked.
So, I keep talking about those two different numbers, this total budget cost, project budget, that includes land acquisition and things that aren't going to count toward the percentage, but it is still a cost of doing the project. There's also a million-four contingency. You never use all that, but nevertheless, good planning is you put that in your budget, and, you know, so your, the fee is based on the total construction cost, not some of these other outside costs. But they need to be looked at, because they are things that, that could be, would, would they have to be paid, you know, so that there's enough, there's cushion there, if you will, with the contingency and things. As you go forward, that'll be more refined, and you wouldn't need quite as large a contingency. But in a large project, it's very common to have a contingency of that nature in there to cover the unforeseen conditions. And, you know, we've never had many change orders, I don't expect that we would, but you are dealing with an existing building and some hidden conditions.
Any further discussion?
I do not.
Okay.
Anyone else? I guess I would just reiterate what we've already went through, like, I think Van Oven administrator had tried to acquiesce. We went down this road a few times, and, and we've talked about the concept, we've talked about what architect we were going to use, and we've talked about Plans A and B and C, a few different ideas, they came back again, we looked at another idea. At this stage, it's a matter of, you know, we went past the concept, we're into the architectural mode, so these people have to go to the next level for us to determine which direction we want to go.
That's correct.
Yeah.
I'm not sure if a motion was made to approve the resolution, I couldn't hear...
Nothing was made yet.
But I know there was no second, if that was a motion.
No.
Okay, with that, I'll move the passage of Resolution 26-48, the resolution approving of a standard form agreement between owner and architect for a large or complex project for architectural services to design a new Bartlett Police Facility between the Village and Williams Architects.
Moved by Trustee Carbonaro, seconded by Trustee Arons. Is there any additional discussion?
You know, I wish we could have talked about this at the committee level. I guess I've got more questions for Williams. They could, I know we've talked about this before, but I'd like to hear a little bit more about what their process is, you know, what opportunities we'll have to save money, because right now, we're talking about spending a lot of money, but we're always looking for ways to save money. I guess, again, I just repeat myself, I wish...
We certainly can do that.
Is this, is this overly time-sensitive? Does this...
No, it is not time-sensitive.
There is a representative from Williams here.
Yeah, they can probably answer some questions for us, we're in discussion mode here, so...
So, let's, let's go.
If we can get to the point where we answer the questions that need to be answered and still make a decision, then we can, or if that doesn't happen, then we can table it and move it to...
Mark Wishhouse, President of Williams Architects, glad to be here this evening. Hopefully, I can answer any questions or fill out any information you're interested in. So, what...
I guess one of my concerns is, you're going to come back with a plan that isn't $20 million, that is $35, and now we've got to pay more money to pare it down to 20.
Okay. Well, that, we wouldn't probably have been selected in the first place if that was a habit of Williams Architects to end up in those kinds of situations. Making municipal projects happen on schedule, on budget, is something that we take very, very seriously at our firm, and that's why we tend to get repeat customers, is we understand you're spending taxpayer dollars. And yes, during this process, we will work very closely with your staff to look at the needs, make sure it functions very well. We will work with staff and you folks, of course, on the appearance of the building and what your goals are for how it wants to present itself to the community. The architecture would work with your downtown. But also, your attorney pointed out, we are strongly recommending you bring a qualified construction manager into this project fairly quickly, because they have great expertise in evaluating costs of buildings. We as architects certainly track costs of buildings on a per-square-foot basis, but since they work with the trade contractors on a regular basis, they get into the very fine details of what each item costs, and they have very extensive information on that. So, having them onboard early, doing cost estimating, working with us and your staff to review all the products and methods of design, and how it's going to be put together, they help us get a very accurate picture of the cost of the project. We often indicate that ourselves and the construction managers agree, and we also disagree. We're two very qualified professional groups, and we are advocating for the design, and your construction manager is advocating for the budget and constructibility, all very important things to you, the client. And at times, it will have us and the construction manager debating and wrestling over the costs and issues together, and that's exactly what you, as a client, want. You want well-experienced people from slightly different perspectives, still all achieving your goals, but wrestling hard to make sure that you get a great design, but we make the budget happen, and we make it happen correctly, and we find all the ways to save you money, and still get you the best building your dollars can afford. So, I applaud your staff and your attorney on hiring qualified people who have done these projects many times before, have met budgets many times before, and have very successful projects for their clients. So, that is a process that will be very vigorously pursued throughout this project.
So, what happens if the state cuts our MFT, cuts our LGDF, the economy tanks, either at the mid, while we're in the middle of this thing, or we're at the end?
Okay.
What, what happens then?
Well, your attorney wisely put in the agreement that at any time in this process, you, the owner, can terminate our contract for convenience. So, if you suddenly find the money's gone, you can stop us at any time, pay us only for what we have done, and pause and figure out what you want to do next. Also, this contract does have the minimum fee in it, however, it also states at the beginning, there are some basic understandings of what the scope of this project are. So, if we get into this project, and you want to significantly change the scope, then we go back to the beginning of the agreement and say, well, it was over $50,000, now we can only afford a $30,000 square-foot building. That opens up the fee discussion again, and we would put together a correct fee to move forward from that point. If you didn't like that, you could terminate us.
And I think that's well put. I think that was your concern as well, Trustee Hopkins. And I, I understand, that's, that's a valid concern, when, when, these are pretty complex contracts, and on the surface, it appears that you're going to pay a million-one no matter what, and that's not the case, it's because it's terminology. Anyone else for Mr. Williams?
I just, I have one thing I'd like to ask, and I'm not very clear on that. Since the budget amount was 1.4 mil and 1.56 mil, I know that we do not have, you know, a firm price for you, it'll be variable. Were there any considerations given, given to and not to exceed?
A certain amount.
That's a question I have.
My, my understanding is that's a seven and a quarter.
Correct. So, if you control your budget...
Yeah.
...facility, our fee is automatically controlled.
Seven and a quarter percent of whatever it is, yeah.
Well, that would be pretty much the responsibility of the construction manager, wouldn't it?
It's certainly a team effort. We work very closely with them to design and use materials that can be built at the cost that they're expecting. Frankly, we have to redesign the building at the end of schematic or at the end of design development at our dime, if it comes in over your budget with their estimates. So, we are very, very motivated, both our reputation, but also internally for our own, controlling our work hours, to see to it that we maintain a design that works with the budget.
Does anybody have anything else for Mr. Williams?
I'm fine, thank you.
Thank you for being here tonight.
Very welcome, thank you.
Got it wrong. Sorry, I forgot their name. Bushaus.
Anybody else have any other questions or discussion before we call the roll?
Wait, I still don't think we, oh, we have a motion.
We had a motion by Trustee Carbonaro, and seconded by Trustee Aaron. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Hopkins.
Yes.
Ranky.
Yes.
Arons.
Yes.
Cammerer.
Yes.
Carbonaro.
Yes.
Dany.
Yes.
A motion carries. And again, thank you for being here, sir.
That's all I have for this evening.
Thank you, Chairman Carbonaro. Next item we have, understanding committee reports this evening, is Public Works Committee Chairman Cammerer.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have no report this evening.
Thank you, Chairman Cammerer. Next item we have this evening is new business. Would anyone like to share any new business that they're concerned with?
Yes, I would, I would like to ask the village attorney not to use the word "chicken" in any of your descriptions until we actually pass that motion. Thank you.
Did I use chicken, Trustee Carbonaro? Did I use that?
He said chicken.
Oh, I know. Trustee, you feel a head impact?
No. Since, since you're trying to be funny, I'd just like to, once again, applaud the Village on the, how nice the flower basket is.
Paul's evaluation this year.
And as far as new business, really, it rolls into questions and answers, but I'll roll this together. I would like to thank the board for the favorable vote. On the Jewel, we made a consent agenda item, but on the Jewel Fire Lane Agreement, I have been at Jewel many, many times, as everyone knows, my son works there, and I pick him up, I drop him off, pick him up in the evening. So, I'm there, oh, gosh, four, five times every week, and I constantly see people abusing that fire lane, and they'll leave, some people leave their car running, and they'll go into Jewel and come shopping. I've seen it where, where the, the young, you know, younger people than I am, I at least move my car, and I don't need any applause for that. I park where I'm supposed to park, because I'm still capable of walking. But the point is, is that I've seen so many people abuse that, and I don't want to, you know, delineate or, or say age groups or whatnot. It's just being abused, and I'm going to leave it at that. And I'm so happy that the, we have a resolution now, an agreement with Jewel and our police department, that they can enforce that, that fire lane. And it's not only the abuse, but it's also a safety hazard, and I'm glad it came to pass, and I want to thank the board for a favorable vote on that.
This does bring up a question, though, Trustee Dany, that I'd like to address to the chief. How many other private properties does the police force work with or enforce as far as problems like this or other? Is this a unique situation?
Not necessarily. If it's private property, it does require an ordinance between the property owner and the village, an agreement that they have to enter into. It's a legal contract that allows us to enforce those ordinances on their behalf, on their property. But it does require what you did, and now that we have it, we can be proactive and aggressive.
But are there other private properties and businesses in town that have done this before?
There are.
For instance?
Yeah, the high schools.
Why are you worried, Mr. Cammerer?
No, I'm just curious. I mean, I'd hate to be...
Yeah, we have some of our strip malls and our schools, those are part, those are
school district property. We've entered into agreements with them to enforce their fire codes, and there are some strip malls in town. Hearthwood Farms, we patrol aggressively, yeah.
I mean, I'm also looking at it from the standpoint of what's, what's the best use of our police force? I mean, you could, you could be, if the Bartlett Plaza people wanted to have an agreement with, with the police force, you could be ticketing people left and right, pulling into the post office the way they do, you know, incorrectly. There's just lots of things that you wonder, what's the best use of the police force, that's all.
Yeah, that's a good observation, and we, we call that an organizational culture. Yeah, we do not enforce every law and ordinance every time it's violated. The courts would be chagrined on that. There is something, there is a value to officer discretion and organizational culture, and that's why you have a board, and that's why you have a police department that answers to the board and the culture you want to set. So, those are valid concerns.
There actually is an agreement with the Gurski Shopping Center.
Is there?
Yep.
Another place I'd have to look out for.
Thanks, chief.
Anything else? Questions? Anyone? And before we adjourn, should I make an announcement that we'll be going, we'll take a five-minute recess because of the length of our committee meetings, so we'll take a five-minute recess and, and go directly into the committee meeting, and directly following the committee of the whole meeting this evening, we're going to be going into executive session to discuss the property acquisition pursuant to Section 2C5 of the Open Meetings Act, and also, the board will be discussing in the executive session pending or imminent litigation pursuant to Section 2C11 of the Open Meetings Act. So, with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn and a five-minute recess.
Move.
Moved by Trustee Dany, seconded by Trustee Cammerer. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Arons.
Yes.
Cammerer.
Yes.
Carbonaro.
Yes.
Dany.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.